Let's call this meeting of the Kokomo Common Council to order. For those that choose to, please rise for invocation, or you may remain seated. Councilwoman Sanders.
Yes, I'd like to invite Pastor Faison to the microphone to offer the invocation. He comes from the New Hopeful Gospel Church. Welcome.
Thank you. Here?
Yes.
Our Father who is in heaven, the Lord God, King of the universe, creator of all things, blessed be thy holy name. We enter your presence by the precious blood of our King, Lord, and Savior Jesus Christ, thanking you for your grace and mercy given us in this occasion. Knowing then that the earth is the Lord's and the fullness thereof, the world and day that dwelleth therein, give these your servants, wisdom and understanding hearts in executing their stewardship to tell the difference between good and evil as they execute impartially the affairs of the people. In this great city of Kokomo, in the name of Jesus, amen.
Amen.
Would you please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. At this time, would the clerk please call roll?
Councilman Wyatt.
Here.
Councilman Cameron.
Here.
Councilwoman Young.
Here.
Councilman Hayward.
Here.
Councilman Kennedy.
Here.
Councilman Hayes.
Here.
Councilwoman Lykard.
Here.
Councilwoman Sanders.
Here.
Councilman Mickel.
Here.
Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the June 11th council meeting.
So, a moment.
Motion has been made and supported. Is there any further discussion from anyone in the audience or on the council in regards to this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Under communications, our next council meeting will be July the 9th, 2018, with an informational meeting at 5:30 PM in the lounge room, that's the room right behind us, and council meeting at 6:00 PM in the council chambers. Under communications, I'm legally obligated to acknowledge that each of the council members have received a list of CF-1 tax abatement compliance forms from the development department. This is a list of businesses that have received tax abatements, and the council is in receipt and review of these documents. At this time, is there any general communication to come before the council? If you're here to speak on the ordinance, you'll have an opportunity to do that later. This is general comments from anyone in the audience. Okay, thank you. Is there any committee reports from anyone on the council? Thank you. Okay, let's get into the business tonight. Would the clerk please read ordinance 6899 by title only?
Res zoning LI to HI, location 2101 North Webster Street, petitioner James Courts, first reading.
Councilwoman Young.
Mr. President, I move for passage on ordinance 6899 on first and second reading.
Support. Thank you. Motion has been made and supported. Is there any further discussion from anyone in the audience in regards to this motion?
Mr.
And I'll go back to you for an explanation, okay?
Okay. Mr. President, the petitioner of James Courts, on behalf of EAC Scrap Processing LLC, is requesting a change in zone classification from low intensity industrial business park to high intensity industrial heavy manufacturing, and is for property at 2101 North Webster Street. And they plan to use it for a scrap metal processing facility. And the proposal used is comparable with the comprehensive plan in the area of the proposal. And if there's any questions, maybe, I believe, Mr. James Courts or Mr. Sheeline is in the audience.
And it?
Yeah, there was no remonstrators there.
Thank you. Once again, I'll start all over. Motion has been made and supported. Is there anyone in the audience or anyone on the council that would like to speak to this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. At this time, would the clerk please read ordinance 6900?
Res zoning R4 to M2, location 711 North Purdum Street, petitioner Tim Martin, first reading.
Councilwoman Young.
Mr. President, I move for passage on ordinance 6900.
Thank you.
Support.
Thank you. Councilwoman Young.
Mr. President, Tim Martin, the petitioner, on behalf of Advantex, he's requesting a change in zone classification from R4, which is medium density urban residential, to M2, general multifamily residential apartment property located at 711 North Purdum Street. The planned use is supportive housing with 35 units, five one bedrooms, 22 bedrooms, 10 three bedrooms, and it was said it's a secure building, staff on site, permanent housing, wraparound services, full-time management maintenance. The commission forward a favorable recommendation to the common council. There was about 49 people in attendance and 16 remonstrators at meeting. Mr. President, Tim Martin, the petitioner for the developer, Advantex, is in the audience to speak to this request change.
Okay, thank you. I assume there's several people here that would like to speak to this ordinance, and I want to set the ground rules on how we'll handle this. It has to be officially presented to the council, so I'm going to let the petitioner come forward first. He's going to present the project to the council, and then at that time, we will take other communication from those in the audience. You will be given three minutes to make your point, so I ask you to be brief and to the point. There will be no booing, no applauding. This isn't the Gong Show. This is a city council meeting. We will be respectful of each other's viewpoints. If you can't do that, you will be escorted out of the room. These are the same instructions I do when we have large audiences, okay? At this time, Mr. Martin, would you please come forward, give your name and address, please?
Yes, I'm Tim Martin with Advantex Development Corporation. My address is 402 Court Street, Evansville, Indiana, 47708. Thank you. Members of the council, Advantex Development Corporation is requesting a change of zoning to facilitate the development of permanent supportive housing at the property on Purdum Street, 35 units, as the councilwoman mentioned, five one bedroom, 22 bedroom, and 10 three bedroom apartments that we provide for families or individuals that are homeless and experiencing chronic substance abuse disorder and potentially chronic or coexisting mental health issues. I have with me tonight Deb Cook, the executive director of the Kokomo Housing Authority, who is a partner in the project, and Dr. Carrie Cadwell with Four County Counseling Services, who is our service provider, to talk about some of the wraparound services and also some of the statistics about what happens when a project such as this is placed into a community. We anticipate an investment of about $8 million. This will be a three-story facility. We've been working with the city on a facade that would be beneficial or fit in the community, something that would be appealing, that has nice aesthetics with exterior balconies with courtyard-type of style. I've brought some renderings. If the council would like to see those, be happy to set those up either on easel or present them here in front of the council. We anticipate an application to go in if we're successful in this motion, the end of July of this year. We would be notified if we're selected. We are applying for low-income housing tax credits to Indiana Housing and Community Development Authority. That announcement is made in the second week of November. If we're successful, we would start construction in the spring of 2019. We anticipate about a 12-month construction schedule. We would begin leasing upon receiving a certificate of occupancy from the local building commission.
Deb Cook, Director of the Housing Authority, 1738 West Walnut, Kokomo, Indiana. Briefly, I'll talk about statistics of the need first. In the first quarter, DCS, and this is data from DCS, there was intervention for 10 homeless families due to drug addiction. 23 children were impacted in three months, and that was just in the first quarter 2018, and this was due to drug addiction. And this is from Open Arms from Van Taylor. There were 24 children with homeless mothers residing at the Open Arms Shelter in less than a year due to the head of household being addicted. That's 14 households. The new data that just came out from DCS, 55% of child removals in 2017 were related to parental substance abuse. And in September 2005, DCS reported 10,000. And as of September 2017, it was 20,000. It's doubled. So, the need is there. Now, do these projects work? This is from data from the project in Evansville, and there were, this is from the University of Southern Indiana did some research on the project there. This was a supportive housing, permanent housing for those believed with mental illness. There was 100% reduction in the use of emergency shelters, 83% savings associated with incarceration, 78% savings for medical hospitalizations, and 66% savings for emergency room services, 62% savings for mental health hospitalization. Further evidence from the studies shows supportive housing benefits communities by improving the safety of neighborhoods, beautifying the city blocks with newer rehab properties. Also, from the, there's Crawford Apartments in Bloomington is a permanent supportive housing project, and it ended more than 300 years of collective homelessness in the first year. And in the residence first year, there, this is a Crawford Apartments in Bloomington, 65% drop in emergency room visits, 88% drop in incarcerations, 90% drop in time of incarceration, and in 2016, they had a 90%, 1% housing stability rate and a 39% income improvement. From the perspective of the housing authority, we had to, when folks don't meet our very strict federal guidelines, they have to be evicted. And that means that families are evicted because of their parents' substance use, and those children are affected and are on the street. There is nothing to fill that gap, and this project will, because this is a different funding source. You can take families and reunite them and get the wraparound help for those children that they need, because those 10 homeless families that DCS put out, those kids are on the street. So, we have strict regulations, and in, since 2016, 19 families with children were evicted from KHA due to substance use disorder. So, those children end up on the street, and this would fill that gap.
Thank you.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
It would be interesting to know what the fallout is for these kids that are in school, how that impacts their learning and, you know, their temperament and everything.
There's some really good data from, and this comes from Kids Count data, and you can get it online. And for Howard County, all the schools in Howard County, there were 444 homeless or housing unstable students, were the seventh highest in the state. And those are kids that are in school. That's not counting the invisible population of those kids that aren't trying to go to school and have a normal life.
What I was talking about, how they do in the classroom.
Right, and Carrie, Dr. Cadwell can speak to that, because they actually have a presence in the schools, and they do onsite counseling. So, I'll bring Dr. Cadwell up.
Doctor, please give your name and address, please.
Sure. Dr. Carrie Cadwell, address is 1948 Boulevard, Kokomo, Indiana. Thank you all for having me here this evening. As both the CEO and then also as a clinical psychologist, I'm excited to be participating in this project. Today in Indiana, it's more likely that a Hoosier will die from a drug overdose than a car accident, and that tells us something about the state of our union here. What I will tell you, to give you a little bit of background, if you're not familiar with Four County Counseling Center, we are a certified community mental health center that also provides both outpatient mental health and addiction counseling, but we're also certified as a private mental health institution and have an inpatient unit in Logan's Port, Indiana. We have been in business, well, in Kokomo, since 2015. We have been in business for over 40 years as community mental health center. We own and operate residential facilities in Cass County, so we're very familiar with the needs of these types of projects. In this particular case, we are asked to be the supportive service provider or the treatment provider. And what that really means is that we will be providing onsite outpatient therapy services, substance use groups, skill building and recovery coaching. We will also have care navigators onsite, and essentially, those individuals help to do assessments to determine what all this person needs in order to be successful in their life. So, we want to provide treatment, and we also want to ensure that all the pieces to a successful life are in place for the individual also, as that's unbelievably important in sustaining sobriety. In addition to that, we offer psychiatric services, and so we will ensure that those individuals either have transportation to our location, but we're also looking at the ability to provide those psychiatric medication management services onsite also at the housing complex. What we know about any type of service, and we are pretty dedicated to this approach, since we've been in Kokomo since 2015, which is pretty commensurate with our approaches in our other counties, we serve with our full continuum, six counties currently and some services in two additional counties, is that the more embedded you are, the better it is, right? Once you ask somebody and you send a referral for somebody to go even two blocks down, the chances that they walk in the door go right down the tubes, for lack of a professional way to say that, right? More, it is more likely that you are going to be able to engage somebody if you catch them where they are, right? So, we have clinic services in Indiana health centers here in Kokomo. We have embedded clinical services within the Kokomo School Corporation, within Taylor School Corporation. We provided embedded services to Bonavista at their Hoffer Street location until their relocation. That is really the best approach to care, because what you want is you want to meet them where they are, get them the services where they are, because one of the biggest barriers for the populations we serve with mental health and substance use needs is transportation. Being able to figure out how to get to appointments is a huge barrier, not to mention the stigma of actually seeking services at any given location. So, the more you're able to provide onsite, the better off you are in engagement and potentially being able to move that individual along with their family on the path to recovery. Now, to your point about the children, absolutely does it impact their learning experiences? What we know is that kids with solid social-emotional functioning do much better academically over time, and that's why it's nice to, again, not just for the parents, but having a service provider onsite doesn't just help the adults, it helps the children, because we're really talking about being able to provide therapy services to youth when they need it onsite, connecting them to home-based case management, and making the link to their school-based case managers. Most of these kids, I imagine, that we will have in the supportive services program, they're probably kids that we already see in the Kokomo School Corporation. And we run summer programs throughout the summer, and so, again, there's an option for those youth even involved in this housing project to be involved in those summer programs that occur over this period of time during the year.
Okay.
I have one question, doctor. I like the fact that you have the wraparound, and I know there's going to be some kind of accountability. Are there drug screens that they do periodically, or those, I guess I'm just trying to, you know, you mentioned, Mrs. Cook, about accountability, so I guess I was just kind of curious about how that would work.
Well.
Because of the facility, so how does that work? What's that mean? I don't know what you.
Yeah, sure. Well, in the case of the housing complex, and I'll defer to Tim, but I do not believe we can require drug screens in that case. And so, it's not like a court-ordered referral where certain parameters have to be put in place. These are really programs that in many ways, the individual has to agree to engage.
Mr. President, I have a couple of questions also. One for you, Tim, and one for doctor. The recidivism rate, do you statistically have that from an abuse point of view when a mother and/or father and their family unit is together and stays together in a facility like this? Do you have statistically any evidence of the success factor? I've read studies where they actually, the one study I read, it was 100% that they stayed clean because their family was with them, but I haven't seen or heard any evidence of that.
Yeah, can I speak to a specific?
Excuse me, I'm going to ask you, be brief.
Okay, all right.
Okay. I want to get to the people in the audience and maybe have some time to.
Absolutely. Cannot speak to a specific study. What I can tell you is that keeping families together oftentimes does generally increase the success of the parent, because it's particularly traumatic for both the parent and the child to be separated from one another, and it complicates the course.
And if I may add to that, there's data available on the Corporation for Supportive Housing's website, specifically in this area, links to multiple studies in multiple areas around the country. So, I apologize, I don't have that statistic today, but it is available from a public source, Corporation for Supportive Housing. I'd also just close in saying that our families will have a lease. This is affordable housing, low-income housing tax credits, there are house rules, that we'll have onsite management, and they will pay rent. Their rent is based off 30% of their adjusted gross income. So, as they begin to work and rebuild their lives and go out and get jobs, we'll be adjusting their rents based on their income. So, yes, there is a lease, and yes, they will pay rent. Be happy to answer.
Year-to-year lease?
It's an annual lease, correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted to ask. Thank you.
Right, thank you.
That's good. Okay, thank you. All right. Any other questions? Okay, if you are interested in speaking, please approach the microphone, give your name and address, and we will start. I think the pastor was up first, I'll get you next.
My name is Erin Joseph Galis. I live on 101802 Calact Drive East, Kokomo, Indiana, and I was just wanting to ask what a zone classification change will do for the facility.
Mr. Sheeline, I'll let the expert answer. I haven't answered, but I'll, I don't get you here that often, so I'll put you to work.
Greg Sheeline, Director of the Kokomo Howard County Plan Commission. Basically, what this rezoning does is allow for the multifamily housing to be built, because right now, it's residential. The M2 zone does allow for multifamily housing to be built, so that's basically the reason for the rezoning.
Basically, Erin, there are different classifications that allow certain things to go on that piece of property. To have a multifamily dwelling, it has to be rezoned, okay?
Because right now, it's R4, which is all single-family homes, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bishop, I'm sorry.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Bishop Charles Glenn. I live at 719 East Taylor Street here in Kokomo, Indiana. I'm the pastor of the Fountain of Life Word and Worship Center located at 611 East Jackson Street, and I'm the president of the 10-point Coalition of Kokomo. I'll preface everything I'm about to say is that I'm totally against this project. I've been a citizen of northeast Kokomo for 72 years of my life. I've grown up in that area. I live there. The proposed facility is one block from a city park, two blocks from Carver Community Center. There are six churches in the surrounding area. Northeast Kokomo has already been designated a drug center, and to put a building there for people that are homeless and addicted would seem almost like, as someone once said, building a place for alcoholics across the street from a liquor store. I don't have all the data and everything that is said, and I've looked and I've read, but the one thing that I do know is this. I do know that when I read the newspaper, if the newspaper told the truth, it never mentioned 400 students from Kokomo Center schools, but it did mention bringing in people from Chipton County, Cass County, Miami County, and Wabash County. Now, I don't know where these 400 students and their parents or guardians of whomever are coming from, but it never mentioned them in our local newspaper, but it did mention bringing in other homeless and addicted folks into northeast Kokomo. Again, in closing, I'm Bishop Charles Glenn. I approve this message.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you, Bishop. Please give your name and address.
My name is Karen Lancaster. I live at 710 East Dalem Street, Kokomo, Indiana, 46901. I have a few questions still remaining. I've done a lot of my own research, so I've looked at the numbers and the statistics. I know that my block group is actually valued, average home value is 92, is $55,000 per home, and the city's average is 92. I know that the median income for the city is $39,000 in my neighborhood, well, my block group is $32,000. And I know that adding more people to the neighborhood would likely increase the likelihood of a grocery store coming into my neighborhood, but I also know that the lack of income from those people will depreciate the income gap even more. I have some questions about the running of this facility. Ms. Cook, you said that there were 23 children just in three.
Questions to me, okay? And I'll make sure they get answered by them, all right?
Ms. Cook's quoted 23 children that were removed in three months due to drug use. I would like to know firstly, how will the wraparound care system be able to assist those children, or maybe Dr. Cadwell would be better suited to answer that question, because if the parents have to be removed or taken to the hospital, what will happen to those children? I have a question of.
Handle that word.
So, we'll do one at a time?
I'm trying to give you the best response, okay? Which one of you want to answer her first question?
Sure, I can do my best to answer.
Would you please stand and come forward to the mic, so everybody can hear what you say.
So, in the case of the children's care, so the first thing would be that if a child was in need of care in general for mental health, behavioral health, or substance use issues, in the case of it being a teenager or older, then we would provide the same level of care that we would for any youth that comes into our offices. And then, in the event of an emergency, if the parents were to need to go to a hospital or otherwise, then we would be contacting relevant relatives, providing any contact that was needed to ensure continuity of residential placement for those kids. And in the event that it was needed, although I would hope not, if we needed to contact the Department of Child Services, we would do so.
Okay. My next question, and Dr. Cadwell, you can probably answer this one as well. How does this help the mentally ill? What provisions are made for them? How does this assist them? I know it gets them off the streets, which is always good, but how will this in particular help our mentally ill that we have with families? And I still have two more questions, one directed to the city in particular. In moving these.
Let's take one at a time.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. I'm going to give you more than three minutes, okay?
Okay.
All right, but you do need to get to your point.
I am, these are the questions I have as a resident.
So, the majority of individuals who are diagnosed with a substance use disorder will oftentimes have co-occurring mental health issues. And so, in that particular case, one of the single biggest barriers is, is we can treat a mental health condition, we can treat substance use issues, but successful recovery from both means having a life in the community. And so, what that means is really, and that's part of our job, is to help them find employment, supported employment, have them have places where they're embedded within their community that are successful socially, in work, life, and in family. And so, really comprehensive support of that individual is the best possible care to provide.
Okay, thank you.
I want to remind you, we're here tonight for this council to vote on a zoning issue.
I understand.
And your comments, and I'm not trying to be smart, I like, you want to address them to the council, because you're trying to convince this council to go, I don't know where you're at on this, go one way or the other, okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right, okay, go ahead.
Okay. Now, the reason I'm asking these questions.
Put you on the clock now.
Okay, that's fine. The reason I'm asking these questions is because these are questions I have not heard people from the council ask before. They're questions that are directly concerning me and my quality of life in my neighborhood, and also the quality of life for these people that will be coming to live there, okay? So, the statement was made of improving safety of the neighborhoods. I would like to know how does that happen to improve? And also, the quality of life for these people that will be coming to live there. Okay? So, the statement was made of improving safety of the neighborhoods. I would like to know, how does that happen to improve the safety of the neighborhood? And also, will the police department, upon this place opening up, be given further training in detail to understand what this facility is and the people who are likely to be living there, and how they deal with them day-to-day? Because we know that people with mental illnesses and people with drug addictions and/or mental illnesses often have more difficult interactions with police officers. So I would like to know that they will be kept safe regardless. We have a good police department, I'd like them to stay that way.
Okay. Don't have the chief of police here. Had I known, I would have invited him. But I do have the mayor here, and he would be more than happy to speak to that.
Okay.
I'll pick, you want to pick it up at the end? Okay?
That's fine.
All right.
So that's all I have for questions.
All right, thank you. All right, next.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Deandra Beard, and 1507 North Dulphus, business owner right around the corner at 108 North Main Street. Good evening. I just really have one question that we sort of talked about in the town hall meeting we had the other night, and I feel like it was addressed, but I want someone here to sort of speak to this question of how the location was selected, in particular for the zoning or the rezoning of this area. And I ask that question with this in mind, given the area has historically has been an area that has been redlined, right? Meaning, when my parents and my grandparents were looking for places to live, they were redlined into this particular area. And so then, when development has come along throughout the years, there was, has not been necessarily a community voice in terms of development. And so, one of the questions that came to the top of the surface during our meeting was, how was this location selected? And what are the, what's going to happen? What's, I heard someone say something about fear, right? And I heard someone else say something about not in my backyard. And I'm just putting those things out there-
At the town hall.
At the town hall. I'm just sharing with you, those of you who weren't there. All of these questions came to the surface, and all these thoughts came to the surface. But my underlying question is particularly how the location was selected and the effects that that location will have on the community.
I got a guy back here just waving his hand, wanting to answer your question. Mayor, good night. Would you like to handle that at the end as well?
I'd like to answer all the concerns, but I would love to have an opportunity to address the rest.
Okay. Alright, he's going to give you an answer.
Thank you.
And I just want to make sure the record states that redlining is illegal, has been for many, many years.
Of course.
At least 35 or 40 that I'm aware of. So to even bring it up at a council meeting in the record, I mean-
Illegal.
No, there is no basis for any redlining at all.
Okay, but those of us who grew up in that neighborhood know the reality of that.
I know the reality of it too.
Okay, alright, so-
Council members and people in the community, address your questions and comments to me. I am in charge of this meeting.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. Hayes.
Thank you. The mayor's going to answer your question.
Yes.
Toward the end.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'm not here to get in a debate with a council member and a citizen over redlining.
Right.
It is, it has existed, and we are one of the few counties or cities that has a human rights commission that does address these things.
Right.
Okay?
Right, but for the record, it has existed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, next.
Mr. President, could I ask a question of Mrs. Beard?
Of course, Jane. It has been for years.
Sister Deandra Beard.
Miss Beard, would you please come back to the microphone? Councilwoman has a question.
You asked a question, how was this selected?
Janie, I think the mayor is going to give an answer to this.
Oh.
He's been waving his hand.
Oh, okay, I'll wait, I'll wait for mine later.
Stay with me, guys, stay with me. Thank you, we'll get back to you, okay?
Yeah, I'll get back.
Thank you. Next. Please give your name and address, sir.
My name is Red Cannon from 817 East Mulberry Street, and I just have a quick question. If we're going to be addressing a mental illness facility, is this going to deal with mental illness such as schizophrenia, bipolar disorder, and autism? Or is it just going to be dealing with drug addiction? And that's my only question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Doctor? Good question. Thank you.
So, this is primarily homeless with the presence of a substance use disorder for the head of household or co-head. However, the comorbidity or the co-occurrence of a mental health disorder can exist. So, the likelihood that somebody could be diagnosed with depression, or anxiety, or bipolar disorder, or may in fact have a additional diagnosis of schizophrenia, that could exist. It also could exist that somebody could have a substance use disorder and be an adult that's a parent with kids who also is also diagnosed with autism. So, in that way, those additional diagnoses certainly could exist, but they primarily have to be presenting with the substance use disorder in order to qualify for the housing.
Thank you, doctor. Alright, next.
Good evening, my name is Jason Mitchell, I live at 5485 East County Road, 150 South in Logan's Port. I'm the current executive director of the EMAIS Mission Center in Logan's Port. We have a homeless shelter, a food pantry, and a thrift store there. And we see about 180 to 200 clients, homeless people, every year. About half of the population that we see coming to our shelter do have some kind of mental health disorder or substance abuse issue. Currently in Logan's Port, we don't have a facility that, apart from four county counseling center and Dr. Cardwell, that deal directly with that particular situation. And for us, it has become, it's become difficult to serve our clients effectively without having in-home care or kind of in-in-facility care. We do do close links with four county, and we've seen over the, it's about 16 years that we've been open now, that we have had very low instances of any critical violence, any kind of drug abuse, any, I know that the fear kind of comes up in people's minds that when you have people that you're caring for that have some kind of mental illness or that have a drug addiction, that you're going to kind of collect in people who are drug dealers, that are going to be around in the community just looking for prey, as it were, for people that are addicted to drugs, or if somebody's got a mental health condition, that they might become a problem to the community at large. We have very, very little incidence of that. We do not have a 24/7 care facility. Our staff aren't in the facility 24/7 to care for people. So we often have people who are drug addicts or who have mental health conditions who are left pretty much to their own devices and have never had an issue of violence or an issue of, you know, having drug dealers knocking at people's doors. So, I can understand most definitely the concerns that people have about what housing people with drug addictions and with mental health conditions is like, but in my experience, they're just people who need help. They're people who are crying out for help, who just need the chance to get, to get something positive in their lives, to bring them out of these situations. And permanent and supportive housing is something that the Indiana Housing and Community Development Authority has specified that is extremely important for people. We do not have enough permanent and supportive housing units anywhere in Indiana to help people with these kind of critical issues. We have a major opioid epidemic in Logan's Port, I'm sure it's no different here, and we see a lot of people with those particular addictions coming into our facility. We've housed many families from Kokomo because there is no facility here for families to stay together. Kokomo Ruski Mission and Open Arms do a great service here in the community, but they don't keep families together. And we believe that it's critical to keep a family unit together in order to give them the strength and stability that they need to heal properly through, throughout a number of things. If I was taken away from my family without having any of these conditions, it would be traumatic for me, let alone trying to deal with some of the issues that people are facing out there. So, so I think that a facility such as this is something that I would like to see in Cass County, because I know that there's people who can be helped by this, and our homeless shelter had a lot of kickback to it.
You're on the clock, so I have a lot of time.
I'm sorry.
Thank you for making the trip over and telling us about your experience with a similar organization in your community.
You're welcome, sir.
Alright?
Sir, thank you.
Thank you. If we have time at the end and you have more to say, please feel free to come back up, okay? Alright. Is there anyone else?
Darnell Smith, 1019 East Haven Street, Kokomo, Indiana. I do understand that you have a choice, you have a decision to make this evening. A lot of lives are in the balance, a lot of people are going to be affected by this. Okay, I want you to consider in your decision-making process, you're talking in an area that if you walk that block, it's about 100 steps this way, about 100 steps that way. That's a football field, I know. You know, I'm heavily involved with children. Okay, you're going to concentrate somewhere in the neighborhood of 100 to 150 people in that block. I understand they're coming from different parts of Indiana. Wabash County, Tipton County, Cass County, Miami County, Howard County. Okay, this is Kokomo. This is Monroe and Purdum. Okay, where you're talking. Okay? It's four blocks from my back door. We have to help one another. Is this the best place for it? I would say no. You know, there used to be a daycare center in that general vicinity. We no longer have that. Where are the children going to be at? This is, you know, this is where we interact, you know? Food for thought.
Where are the children going to be at?
Yeah, where are the children? What's the facilities for the children? You know, I don't know how this-
Is this housing for families?
Housing for families, but they're still going to have children.
I understand that.
Okay, okay. Alright, I'm just asking the council to reconsider this location for this facility.
Okay, thank you. Alright, Mayor, good night.
Good evening, Greg. Good night, Mayor of the city of Kokomo. To answer Karen's question, I think it was concerning the interaction with the KPD. The KPD already interacts with a lot of these people. The problem arises when there's a disruption with people with behavioral problems, maybe at a local store. They call the police, the police have no place to take them. They, if they're homeless, they are not necessarily required to take them and keep them overnight at our local hospitals. So, we're dealing with them anyways. We just don't have it necessarily, sometimes we do, but sometimes they have no address and there is no place that we can take them. Concerning Deandra's question on why this was, location was selected, it would be very easy on my part and the city council's part is to segreg, to separate these people and segregate them from the rest of our community. To put them out in a cornfield, build a new facility, isolated from the rest of society. We want them close to things like the Carver Center. We want them close to the YMCA. We want them close to libraries.
Can you please-
We want them close to libraries. We want them close to the YMCA. And Bishop Glenn, we want them close to six churches, if that's, if that's in that close facility. Here's some interesting things. What this is about is change. Two years ago, this council took on a challenge on discriminated, discrimination in the LGBT community. I watched as people lined up in front of this microphone and said there were going to be rapes in bathrooms, there were going, going to, there was fear mongering, they were told, they told us that in public restrooms there would be, all kinds of things happen. That's never happened. About a year and a half ago, our city and county worked together to do a comprehensive smoking ban. I heard all, I got the emails from bar owners and patrons and residents saying, if you pass this, all the bars in Kokomo are going to close, all the smoking facilities. What I've witnessed is places are putting in outdoor seating and expanding out and putting outdoor areas. I've seen that at the Oasis Lounge, it's going on today at the Handle Bar. You can, there just, was just a new country bar that opened on the north end, they're not a location that wasn't even a bar before that. The, the same argument happens every time we do development. If every time I, I had 15, or 25, or 50 remonstrators, if every time they came to a microphone and spoke against something, if we didn't follow through, we wouldn't do anything in the city of Kokomo. We had over 50 remonstrators about six years ago come complain and tell us not to build new housing at Indiana University Kokomo because it wasn't the right location, it was in a floodplain area. There were people going to be hit by cars, there was going to be all kinds of wild parties with these young students. Well, what's happened since then? Indiana University Kokomo has grown, it's the fastest-growing campus in the IU network, and we have a completely different private developer who now wants to build more student housing on the east side of the campus. Trailside townhomes. I think it was just less than a year ago, we were putting low-to-mod housing on the south side of Kokomo, South Union Street and on South Home Avenue. Probably 50 remonstrators came to this microphone and said, don't do this. We like, we want to help low-to-mod income families, but we don't want it on this street, on this block, in this neighborhood. And that's, that was the question, that happened. It happened when we built the Kingston Apartments on the far north side, near North Webster and North Cortland, just north of North Street. I had people send me nasty emails, and if you remember, that was the old Kingston factory that had a blighted piece of property, it was a public eyesore, it was a contaminated lot, and I had people telling me that we don't want those type of people in our neighborhood. That's, that was that argument. We had it with the Jackson Street Commons. Now, Jackson Street Commons, I had neighbors, people tell me that we shouldn't do that, we're putting them in the wrong place, there's never the right location. The Jackson Street Commons is the closest thing I can compare to this because it is a homeless shelter for veterans, not for families, but for veterans. That is a sense of pride of our community. I brag about the Jackson Street Commons and how our community work together, our city, our county government, our trustee, local agencies. The last one I'm going to talk about is a development that's taking place just a few blocks from Bishop Glenn's concerns. If you go to the corner today of Mulberry and Apperson, there are, I would call them upscale townhomes being built. Right on that, right on that block, eight units are under construction today. Now, the ironic part about that block, years ago, that used to be a rehab center called the 24-Hour Club before, after it was the American Legion Hall. It was, it was, it was a place for, for people with addictions to go. Now, it's since closed up, and they, it was foreclosed upon by the bank, and the property was reverted back to the city. So, the city now, at that point, owns the property, had to take it down because it was damaged beyond repair. But we had over 50 people come to this council meeting and come to the rezoning meeting to protest building nice upscale townhomes just a couple of blocks away from this current location that we're looking at. It's everywhere. People say they don't want upscale housing, they don't want homeless housing, they don't want low-to-mod income housing on South Union or at Kingston. And the last thing I'm going to address is the concentration of low-to-mod housing. The biggest concentration we have in low-to-mod family housing is on the south side of Kokomo. When you compile Kokomo Manor, Bradford Run Apartments, Pine Valley, and the Pillars, there are over, when you combine those, that are, there are over 375 low-to-mod income houses and homes in that, in less than a three-quarter mile radius. And what's happened out there? I just went to ribbon cutting about two weeks ago for Posterific. They reinvested in that neighborhood. We have a developer that wants to build over 200 new homes in Webster Park, which I would call medium-family style homes. Those type of projects, these type of projects do not hinder development. Most of the time, they accelerate development. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright. Do we have any other comments, questions, concerns? Call the question. You have a question?
I'd like to call a question.
Commissioner Wyman.
Commissioner?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Paul Wyman, 1533 West Lincoln Road, Kokomo, Indiana. I am here tonight as president of the Board for Systems of Care, an organization that we refer to now as Turning Point. As you all know, there's been a tremendous amount of work done in our community in the last, oh, six to eight months regarding the opioid epidemic, substance abuse issues, and mental health issues. And as a result of a summit last September at Indiana University Kokomo, about 100 people in our community came together and started working on various subgroups attacking this issue on many fronts. And those 100 people in our community have really put a tremendous amount of time and effort in to take a look at this issue and try to identify a good approach forward to help these- to help these individuals. And from that blossomed an organization called Turning Point. And Turning Point is an opportunity for us to connect individuals who are suffering from substance abuse and mental health issues, connect them to the resources that they need to start getting help. And within all of that work of these individuals and Turning Point, oftentimes we are coming across and identifying gaps. And these gaps are the situations where we either don't have the service in our community or are struggling to get the people the help that they need. One of those gaps is housing. And it's very clear in all of the research that we've done and the connections that we're trying to make, we don't have the supportive housing that we need. So from our standpoint at Turning Point, we look at this and we're just thinking to ourselves, hallelujah, we have a private individual that wants to come to the table and invest almost $8 million in our community. We have a city administration that's willing to partner with them and provide this type of housing to these families and get them the help that they need. And so we're very supportive of this. We think it's an incredible opportunity for our community. And as the system of care, as the ones connecting to these resources, we will be hand-in-hand with this facility in helping these individuals. Four County is an incredible resource, Four County's part of our system of care, and we would look to provide them whatever support they would need from the system of care in our community. I look at the location of this, and, you know, I can't help but stop and think of the amount of resources and help that's already within this 12-block area that really kind of ties in to everything that we're talking about, or at least should eliminate the fear. And what I mean by that is, if you just look in our 10-block radius from where we're at right now, we have the Kokomo Rescue Mission, we have Open Arms, we have a domestic violent shelter, we have the CAM shelter. We're sitting right here in the epicenter of all that. The mayor mentioned Jackson Street Commons. What an incredible project for our community.
Close to you, through.
Thank you. What incredible project for our community, right here within this epicenter. Many organizations doing a lot to help people. And when I look at all those organizations and the great work they do, and I look at this great project that has the opportunity before us, it just brings me to my final point, and it's this. The individuals and families that we're talking about helping, ladies and gentlemen, the dignity of their life is worth every single bit the dignity of ours. The strength of any community is what we're willing to do for the least among us. And tonight, as a council, you have an opportunity to put a stake in the ground and say, as a community, we will help the least among us, we will do this right, we'll be one of the first. I encourage your support on this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Would you please approach the microphone and give your name and address?
Good evening. My name is Jereline Wilson, and I live at 615 East Marbury Street here in Kokomo, Indiana. And I've been listening, I mean, I hear, I hear you saying, you know, about you want to put this right in the heart of, and I'm saying on the northeast side. Okay, everybody deserves a, a place to live, but they got some drugs out here that really nobody even heard of, really. And me sitting on my porch on East Marbury Street, I see this happening each and every day, somebody's ODing. In fact, before I came here, I seen two people laid out, okay? And with the streets looking like they do on my street, I'm saying, I'm getting to the zoning, but with the streets looking like they do on my street, which I was promised that it wouldn't be like that, it's still like that. You can't even walk on the sidewalk because there's more grass, you couldn't, when you cut your yard, you're cutting the sidewalk as well. This has been going on, and when they see dilapidated areas, that's where they flock. It, it doesn't matter. Now, my thing is, there's a lot of homeless people on my street living in garages. Any, any house that's empty, somebody's living in it, okay? And I know that they need, with the children, and I'm not saying just with the children, I'm talking about homeless. I heard you say something about single, one-bedroom units or whatever, but this is something that, if you put everybody in one spot, I mean, if you put everybody in one spot, it's going to be trouble. And on our side, we already have enough on the east side. I'm telling you, it's already enough. And could I please get my streets fixed on East Marbury Street?
We'll make sure that your councilperson addresses that.
I'd like to call a question, Mr. President.
Question on the motion, on the vote has been called.
A second.
Do I have a support on that question? Or is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of question on the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We have a motion that has been made and supported on the floor to pass ordinance 6900. All those in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Would the clerk please read? Resolution 2212 by title only.
Transfer of funds within the general fund in the amount of $600,000. Transfer of funds within the redevelopment commission fund in the amount of $358,700.
Councilman Wyker.
Mr. President, I urge council to support Resolution 2712.
Or, Councilman Wyker?
This is money that's from general funds and the redevelopment commission in the amount of $958,700 to purchase a new fire truck, so I would urge council to support this resolution.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion or questions from anyone in the audience or on the council in regards to this resolution?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Do we know when the truck would be delivered? Just, I'm just kind of curious.
I know it's, it has to be personalized, so it takes, I think, once it's paid for or once we make the payment, they begin process of it.
I believe, do you want to answer that, Mayor?
You can get back with me.
Why don't you get that offline and get back with me?
Yeah, I'm just curious how long it takes.
Okay. Any further questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Would the clerk please read ordinance 6902 by title only?
An ordinance fixing the maximum salaries of appointed officers, deputies, assistants, department heads, uniformed police and fire, and employees of the city of Kokomo, Indiana for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2018, and ending December 31st, 2018, be it ordained by the common council of the city of Kokomo, Indiana as follows, first reading.
Councilman Wyker?
Mr. President, I move for suspension of the rules and pass ordinance 6902 on first and second reading.
Motion has been made to suspend the rules. Are there any further questions or comments from anyone on the council or in the audience? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilman Wyker?
Mr. President, I urge for passage of ordinance 6902 on second reading.
Or, any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing then, Councilman Wyker?
This is an amendment to the previous ordinance of 6882, and is being presented due to an agreement being reached between the city and firefighters. So again, I would urge council to pass ordinance 6902 on second reading.
Thank you. Any further questions from anyone? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, being there's no further business, come before this body, this meeting is adjourned.